This conference will now be recorded.
Regular meeting of the Taos County Commission of December 3, 2024. Call a meeting to order. It is nine, nine o'clock. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Romero?
Here.
Commissioner Vehil?
Present.
Commissioner Brush?
Here.
Aisha Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero.
Yes, President. Go to the inspirational devotion. Does anyone have one? Or should we maybe just have a moment of silence for community members that have passed recently? I would just mention Robert Coca and Andy Torres. Any others?
My uncle Conde just passed away for Thanksgiving. He was a Korean War veteran.
And I would like to acknowledge also Elena Gonzalez, which was Susan Trujillo's mother, passed away, and Ursula Lula Salazar and Juan Romero, all from our community.
Well, Chairman, since you mentioned it, then also we'd like to remember Leo Ortiz, which is Rachel Romero's grandson, that just passed, passed away last week.
All right. Thank you, man. Okay. Okay, we'll move on to the pledge. Commissioner Brush?
Flash page. To the flag of the highest states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the zeasimple of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Okay, next Commissioners, we have the approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve?
Motion by Commissioner Vehil.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mascherini. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Aisha Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero.
Yes. Okay, we have awards and presentations. Years of service certificates for the month of October and November 2024. Please come forward.
Thank you, Chair Romero. Good morning, members of the Commission. The first individual I'd like to call up is Natalie Evans. Natalie has been, come on up, Natalie. She's been with the county for 20 years. Former Assessor Vehil, probably hired, worked with Natalie all the time. I don't know if she hired you. I don't think that timeframe didn't work out. But Natalie is a very conscientious worker. She's always fighting for what she believes is right. And it's one of the things you can appreciate, appreciate about Natalie. She always fights for what she believes is right. So we have this years of service certificate. Natalie, recognition for your 20 years of service to Taos County, presented to Natalie Evans, October 2004 to October 2024. FR Bob Romero, District 1; Miguel Romero, District 2; Durlin Vehil, District 3; Angela Brush, District 4; Ronald Mascherini, District 5; and Brent Adameo, County Manager. Thank you, Natalie, for your 20 years of service to Taos County. Next, we have Rosa Flores. And Rosa also started off with the Assessor's Department. Then she went over to, former Assessor Vehil is saying that she did hire Rosa. And so then after that, she did go into the clerk's office before she went into the planning department. Rosa, I could say a lot about Rosa, too. She is our de facto Spanish translator. Some of the items that we post on Spanish, I've taken them to Rosa to make sure it makes sense. So we appreciate Rosa for doing that. And she's probably also some of the glue that keeps the planning department together. And we appreciate Rosa because any time that in my office that we need something, we know we could call on Rosa. So thank you, Rosa, for your 15 years of service. We have this years of service certificate and your recognition for your 15 years of service to Taos County from October 2009 to October 2024. So thank you, Rosa, for your 15 years. We don't have Alice here with us. Alice works out of our Chomisal Senior Center, and she's been with Taos County for five years. We next have Jimmy Mays. My S is from Amaliah. Comes from a big, come on up, Jimmy. And those of you that don't know Jimmy, he's community service oriented. He works for the betterment of Amaliah, Costia, and anybody in general. He also used to work for the school district. And he used to always look out for the kids. And anywhere Jimmy has worked, he's made great friends. And he's out, like I said, he always looks out for everybody else. And he, he takes care of everybody. So Jimmy, I want to thank you for your five years of service with Taos County. We appreciate you from October 2019 to October 2024. Thank you, Jimmy. And next, we have Michael Pacheco from our Solid Waste Department. Michael works in our Zero Transfer Station. And Michael keeps that Zero site clean and is always friendly to all the customers. And I've heard nothing but good things about Michael. So Michael, recognition of your five years of service with Taos County. We have the certificate of appreciation for you. Thank you, Michael. We have Paul here with us. Okay. Tell me, Paul's online?
You can hear me. I don't know if you can see me.
So we have a years of service certificate for you, Paul, for your 15 years of service, presented to Paul Adameo from November 2009 to November 2024. Paul was hired as one of our mechanics back then and has risen to be our Fleet Maintenance Director. And Paul is a hard worker and always looks out also for the county as well. And we appreciate Paul. Your 15 years of service will get this out to you. And, and thank you, Paul. Chief Cordova, if you could please come forward. And I don't know, we might have to, we should have told him to dress in his Class A's. You see that every great once in a while.
Don't recognize you.
There's a lot I could say about Mike. I've seen him, we were talking yesterday on the phone and I've seen Mike grow. Is a Questa volunteer firefighter. And he started his service with Questa and still volunteered there till last year. And he still helps out there as well. But Mike has grown. Mike is, had a vision for Fire and Rescue Department of combining the departments. And one of the things is that with Mike, he's gone to other counties, particularly Sandoval County as well, and asked, how do you do it? How did you guys do this? How did you guys combine your departments? And there's very few departments that are combined Fire and EMS or Fire and Rescue. And so it's been a long vision. Every, every year's been like another step forward. So I do think this was great of the New Mexico Fire Chiefs Association recognizing Mike as Fire Chief of the Year. One of the other things and that Mike told me when he told me about this award. And those of you that coach and know sports in New Mexico know that there's a rivalry between North and South. And some of the folks didn't appreciate that a northern New Mexico boy was going to get this award over a southern New Mexico boy. So I was thinking about that this morning, that I had mentioned that, that I'm glad the North is well represented by Mike. And, and he knows some of the story behind that, too. That's a story for another day. So we have a certificate of recognition. The certificate is probably presented to Mike. Michael R. Cordova, we are proud to recognize you for your outstanding dedication, leadership, and service to the community. Your exemplary performance and unwavering commitment have earned you the title of New Mexico Fire Chief of the Year. Your courage, professionalism, tireless efforts have made a significant impact, ensuring the safety and well-being of all. We are deeply grateful for your contributions and proud to honor you in this award. This recognition is a testament of your hard work and passion for helping others in this time of need. We are confident that you will continue to make significant impact as Taos County Fire Chief. Signed, FR Bob Romero, Chairman, and Brent Adameo, County Manager. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, guys. Not a fan of the spotlight, to be honest with you. Appreciate everything. Appreciate your support, I really do. And thank you, guys, for supporting the volunteer districts, all the paid staff, everything, and all your yeses when it comes to voting. So I do appreciate that. And this award is not a me award, it's a we award. I couldn't do this without you guys, without Taos County as a whole, our volunteer districts. James, behind me, we've had a vision and we're, we're getting there. And we'll keep growing and, you know, expect more from us. But thank you, and this is a we award, for sure. It's not a me thing, and I couldn't have done it without you guys. And Ponteau, thank you for everything you've done and your boys. I appreciate that. And Brent and Jason, goodness, thank you for dealing with me. And finance and procurement and HR and admin and everybody. I can be a bit much and I'm stubborn, for sure, but it's worked out so far for me. So I guess we'll, we'll keep moving along. But thank you, guys, appreciate it. And we will have our pending ceremony Friday. So if any of yous are bored or want to come by here, the chambers will have it Friday at nine. I think we have 20-some that are getting pinned, the paid staff. So we're doing good. And thank you, guys, I appreciate everything. And we'll just keep moving forward.
Thank you, Michael. And congratulations, and congratulations to all the people recognized. Thank you, Manager Adameo. We move to public comment. This is opportunity for anyone in the room to speak to the public, speak to the Commission on any topic or concern that you might have. Is there anyone in the room that would like to speak? Okay, I guess we'll move on. We move on to the minutes. This approval of the November 19, 2024 regular meeting minutes. And I understand we have some corrections. Commissioner Brush?
Mr. Chair, thank you. And thank you, everyone who was honored this morning. You guys rock. I move to approve the November 19, 2024 regular meetings with a small number of edits. On page 17, line 764, meandering dirt birds should be meandering dirt berms, although I like the idea of birds. And throughout, Latia should be spelled with the double L at the end. That's in a handful of places. There's one instance, you might know where this is, Mr. Chair, of Xeriscap with an X-E-R-I should be, it should be spelled that way instead of zero escape. On page 25, line 1138, invasive weeds should be invasive weeds. And perhaps the one that is not just spelling. Page 29, line 1362, where it documents our motions. It has Commissioner Vehil seconding the motion to deny the appeal. And I do not believe that it was her. I believe it was Commissioner Mascherini. Miguel Romero, maybe the motion that is correct. Yeah, that's probably the, the main one. So with those edits, I move approval.
Okay, we have motion by Commissioner Brush to approve the minutes as corrected. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mascherini. Further discussion, question? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Aisha Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero.
Yes. And we move to resolutions and ordinances. This is discussion and consideration decision regarding the approval of Resolution Number 2024-53, a resolution establishing legal holidays, operating hours, and closing of Taos County offices for calendar year 2025. Who is manager? Adameo, you're doing this one.
Yes, Ms. Selon was on Philingo this morning. She'll be in a little bit later. We have this holiday resolution. This is our annual holiday resolution. We ask for your approval. Here we meet with the union. We set out what our holiday calendar is for next year. Why it's important that we pass it on this meeting is because it reflects New Year's Day and what we're doing there. So I stand for any questions?
Are there any questions? Are there, did you say that there are changes or no changes at all?
No changes. And that includes the chair, if I may, hours of operation? Is that, that's included in there, right? No changes as well?
Yeah. No, you could look at the hours of operation on page two.
Page two?
Right.
I thought I had seen them, but no changes?
No changes.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion to approve, motion by Commissioner Mascherini to approve. Second by Commissioner Miguel Romero. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Aisha Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero.
Yes. And we move then to item 11, contracts, agreements, MOUs, and bids. First one is discussion and consideration decision regarding the approval of Contract TCC 2024-59, Facility Built Incorporated Senior System Cooler Freezer Removal and Replace Contractor. Contractor will provide labor and materials to remove and replace the existing cooler and freezer at Taos County Senior Center. Mr. Gilbert, is Gilbert here?
No, Gilbert is not here. We're moving a lot quicker than we thought. Yes, we do have this contract that we want to enter in with facility built for, to replace the senior center cooler system. This was the original one at the prior location, at the Philo Vato Building. So when we built this building, we moved it over. We were able to secure a grant for $60,000. We're going to need to put in an additional $15,000 to cover the costs. It went up quickly. So we asked for your approval on this contract with facility build.
Any questions for Manager Adameo? If not, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of Contract TCC 2024-59 with facility build.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion by Commissioner Brush, second by Commissioner Vehil for approval. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Aisha Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero.
Yes. And we will again, discussion and consideration decision regarding the joint powers agreement between Taos County and the Taos County Community Schools Coalition, a joint powers agreement to establish the Taos County Community Schools Coalition and create the Taos County Community Schools Coalition Board at the administrating agency. Mr. Adameo.
Thank you, Chairman. This has been a long process to get to this point. It's, we're probably going on close to two years on this as well. It's, as we have to do in northern New Mexico, we take a lot of conversations, take a lot of meetings with different folks, different entities. What is in this joint powers agreement is an agreement laid out between the county, the town of Taos, Taos Municipal School District, Taos Pueblo, Peñasco Pueblo. And we're also hoping that Peñasco School District will be able to remain in place. They might not be able to come with the funding. So, so we're working hard. We're hopefully down the road, Questa School District will also join the joint powers agreement. And then we're a partnership with different community members, such as the 100% Taos County Action Team and with the subgroup of the community schools under, under 100% Taos. But this JPA has been, spells out how each of entities are going to work together and how a coalition board's going to come in and work on this project. It's not more of, it's not worth calling it a project, but a more of like a movement of establishing community, community school mentality throughout the county. And I stand for any questions?
Anybody else have any questions? Commissioner Brush?
Did you have a question, Commissioner?
No, I was going to make a comment, but go ahead.
I was, I was going to make a comment as well, too. Thank you, Manager Adameo. You, you alluded to, or you didn't allude to, you said that this has been a couple of years in the making and it's one of the more concrete things to grow out of the 100% Taos County initiative, which started with some women taking the initiative on Taos Pueblo and has grown throughout our community in a number of different ways. And it's amazing to see this collaborative taking shape. As you also said, it took a lot of conversations with a lot of the partners who are now supporting this. And the reason why, to me, it is important is for folks who are maybe less, less aware of the community school model. It really is just like, you know, wrapping your arms around the kid when they go to school, making sure that they can learn because they're fed, they have clean clothes, their family has the supports that the family needs. It really is such an important piece of making sure our children and our families are set up for the healthiest, most successful future in our community that we can have. So I mean, they're, they're everything, those kiddos throughout our schools, right? And this is one way, coming together like this throughout Taos County is one way we can say we support our families and we want our kids to thrive. So that's, that's my comment. And can I also just acknowledge that Penny Holland is here in the audience and she has been the facilitator, co-facilitator, along with Bettina Sandoval from Taos Pueblo of the 100% Taos County's Community Schools Action Team. Many, many hours have been put in by Penny. So I want to thank you as well, and as, as well as the entire action team, which is, has representation from schools throughout our county administration and community school coordinators. So that's all I'll say. This is, I just see this as so important to the health of our community and our families. Thank you.
I would, chair, if I may. So first of all, volunteer, these folks are volunteer folks. So we need to recognize the hard work and their passion and dedication. And so I also wanted to say, you know, I have to believe in growing up here. I think there's always been a little bit of the community school, you know, happening within the schools. But I think what's different is everyone has come together to make it one organization. Because even, you know, growing up and going to school here at Taos, I think that was always there. I mean, people were taking care of each other, making sure that we all had food. And I can even remember the ladies from the kitchen, you know, making sure if we needed that extra piece of bread. And I want you all to know, they made fresh bread almost every day. But anyways, it's just everyone has come together. But I also remember when we first started the conversation in a book club and the visionary, you know, the, the model was, was, it was easy to, to understand. It's really easy to fall behind and, and to dedicate our time. But it has been a lot of work just to, to get it to, you know, to, to this point. So I just wanted to, just let everyone know that I appreciate Penny's hard work and all those that actually just never gave up. And so here we are, and I see a lot of good things going forward. And we know they're already happening, but we're just going to enhance it, right? So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Vehil. I have one question, just for clarification on the funding, how it's going to work. Under, after the wherizes and number two receipt and disbursement of funds, 2B says the county will provide budget authority to the Community Schools Director to align funds held within the department budget. Could you maybe clarify a little bit more on what that means?
We, at a private commission meeting or during the budget process, we also created Community Schools Department Budget. So right now, there's really, there is no money in that budget currently. We need to move over money from the LTCF fund. And then we need to receive the money from the town of Taos. And then also the money from the school district and the two pueblos. And then if Peñasco comes in, we'll receive money. So that money will go into that budget. And the director will have that authority to manage that budget like any other department head here at the county.
The county is like the fiscal agent or just as part of the county budget?
It's, it's, in a sense, we're the fiscal agent, but it's more of a collaboration between the other entities to help fund this position.
Okay. Penny, did you want to add anything or?
Well, I want to.
Come forward, please.
That's a great question.
I want to thank all of you. And I want to thank Brent Adameo for continuing to hold and move this forward. And as Chief Cordova said about himself, I know I can be stubborn when I want something. So I appreciate your patience and all of the staff's patience with me for pushing this forward. But we're very excited that this is happening. And the only thing I want to say is that with this two school districts, that we did not ask them for money this first year, which is why Peñasco is not giving money this year. So we're hoping that, I mean, they won't feel the responsibility. But Taos Municipal Schools just felt that they wanted to contribute something. It's a small amount, but they wanted to contribute something. So they will be also. But I'm hoping that it won't keep Peñasco from staying involved because they've been really wanting, and they've been such an important part of community schools in our county. So thank you. Excited to see where we go next. And I don't know if there's any other questions for me specifically?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Go.
With the school districts, what are we looking at? I think they're having a fund that we haven't. Do we have a mom there?
No, that's, we have not asked the school districts to fund for the first year at all. As I was saying, Taos Municipal Schools just decided they happen to have a small chunk and they wanted to contribute something, but they were not asked to, because we know how hard it is for the districts. The conversation will happen among the coalition board once it's foremoving. Whether districts will pay each year, sometimes it'll be in kind, we just don't know yet. But we're aware of how hard the funding is to come by in the school districts, and that's why we're hoping between, at least initially the town and county, we also have some money from a private foundation, the pueblos are supporting it. And then the hope is that the director, we're going to hopefully hire soon, will help fundraise so that the project will eventually fund itself, or at least help support the county and town in doing it.
Question. So the executive director, which has been hired, but like you said, hopefully real soon, that is a, that funding, or that the money's to pay that individual, where is that going to come from? Is that...
That's the county money and the town's money and the pueblos' money.
Okay, that's to kick it off, to get it started. But that's just a one-year funding?
It's a one...
Refresh my memory, I'm sorry, I'm sure you've said...
It's a one-year funding that every year, for the next two years, the town and the county will...
Have committed to.
Right, so for year three, that's where we have to have some conversations during the budget.
Which makes sense, because any program needs a little bit of help in the very beginning, the first couple of years.
And the Keeler Foundation has also contributed, this will go into a fiscal agency through the Community Foundation of Southern New Mexico, so it'll be money that can be spent in other ways that aren't restricted as the county, town, and the government agencies are. And that's also a minimum of a two-year commitment. So we've got a good chunk of money to get us going for these first couple of years, until the new director can work magic, hopefully.
Right, thank you.
Commissioner Brush?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you again Penny and Brent, too. I know you have also put a lot of hours into this. Just a little bit of background, the Community Schools Action Team did do a lot of groundwork. This is built on models that are existing in this state and have worked. There was a school coalition in Dona, but this is most closely, and we had a lot of conversations with the ABC Partnership in Bernalillo County, the Albuquerque-Bernalillo County Partnership. And, you know, again, it really is just kind of making this official, rather than like, you know, just the goodness of our hearts, it makes this, the system is taking care of the kids. And Penny mentioned how Peñasco has been such an important example of community school. They have seen really pretty dramatic success in like middle school rates and graduation rates based on the work that their community school coordinator has done there. So that's what we're hoping is the result from making this actually official and the way that we do business in our schools. And with that, unless there's other questions or comments, I would love to make a motion to approve the joint powers agreement between Taos County and the Taos County Community Schools Coalition, the JPA, to establish the Taos County Community Schools Coalition and create the Taos County Community Schools Coalition Board as the administrating agency.
And I would like to second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Brush, and second by Commissioner Vaquille to approve the joint powers agreement. Before, Madam Clerk, please call the room.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vaquille?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Okay. Thank you all, and we move to the consent agenda. It's A through G. Is there any one of those items that any commissioner would like to discuss further? Or if not, I'd entertain a motion for approval.
We'll approve the consent agenda as stated on our agenda.
Second, we have a motion by Commissioner Vaquille, second by Commissioner Mascherini to approve the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, please call the room.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vaquille?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. And moving right along, our county manager, his report and matters, Mr. Harmio.
Thank you, Chair Romero. Today, on the Economic Development Department, our grant application window is opened for the Workforce Development, Workforce Based Learning Grant Application. Those funds are being administered through the Taos Community Foundation for ARPA funding. So that goes over how Mr. Stern had, during our retreat, mentioned to the county about that workforce money and the money that was going over to TCF for that grant. So that grant funding opened today, and it closes on February 1st. We are, if we haven't done it already, we'll be sending over the grant amount over to TCF. So the funding will reside in their coffers and be able to disperse out. So we get it obligated before December 31st. I'd like to thank Ms. Rawls and Elliott, who's in the room, for working through the weekend and doing the last of the touch-ups on our audit report. And over the last couple of months, she's worked hard, along with all the finance staff. I'd like to thank the treasurer staff, the HR staff, and anybody, and the procurement staff for their hard work in turning in their audit items. We did have an exit interview on last Tuesday afternoon, so that's not a public record right now, but everything has been submitted to the state on time. The deadline for the counties was December 1st, they extended it to the 2nd, with the 1st being on a Sunday, but all the audit has been turned in. And then, on the Human Resources Department, like we mentioned earlier, the community schools director position is being advertised, it closes on December 13th. So if anybody's interested in applying for that, you have, to the 13th, we'll begin advertising probably tomorrow or sometime this week for the Veteran Cemetery Supervisor Position or Coordinator Position. So that will begin getting advertised, and we'll close that out at the end of December, and then we'll hire for that position in January. And then I've already begun the conversations with Santa Fe National Cemetery, we need to do a joint powers agreement with them to provide the training to the staff. So I'll work with Santa Fe in getting that in place as we hire for this new position as well, so. And I'd just like to remind the commissioners and the public that we have the legal ad that was placed in the Taz News calling for submission of letters of intent for the planning commission and board of adjustment. Again, the deadline is September 15th, and they can drop off a letter of interest at the office, or they can email it to rachelmero@rachel.romero@taoscountynm.gov. We began working on replacing some outdated locks in the detention center and updating those locks, so that work began today. And then Mr. Montoya has begun working on updating the policies as well at the detention center, so he's started that on our senior program. We're having our third annual Christmas dinner for the seniors. That was to be held on December 19th, a Thursday, at 1:00 p.m. at, I might not say Civic Center. And we haven't received a flyer yet from Mr. Cordova. We've partnered once again with Daniel Cordova and Native Winds on this endeavor. So they get December 1st, December 19th at 1:00 p.m. Our employee holiday party is December 20th at the Baton Hall, and that'll be from 12:15 to 3 o'clock, so please join us on December 20th. We'll be sending out a flyer on that shortly. Most, all of you received an email from me regarding Senator Gonzalez's Water Policy Summit, and that's December 18th, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. at Buffalo Thunder Resort. A lunch and breakfast will be provided. Then we have our holiday tree lighting, which is on December 6th. Nisa, if you want to come in, update the commission on that.
So we have all the lights up on the trees. The guys have been doing that daily. And the tree came in from Ogeens, ex-mayor Baroni brought it, and then Medina's...
Manu Medina.
Yeah, Manuel put in the crane, and Commissioner Vaquille was there, so it was fun to watch. We also have Mayor, ex-mayor Baroni is also going to be there to be, you know, Santa Claus for us. We are going to have some singing. We would also like, if you guys want to talk or say anything, you can do at that time. It's pretty much going to be a tree lighting, not really like a festival, but there's going to be like some cookies and hot chocolate, so it should be fun, short event. Lighting of Ladoo is going on at the same time or ending at that time, so they're just going to walk over to us. And then there's a street, a street party that's in the parking lot behind the plaza, another business there is doing something. So that Friday's going to be pretty busy downtown, so try to get there early. We are going to get Santa Claus there a little bit early, so he can start with the kids right away, so that we don't have lines that go, you know, late at night. And I think we got everything pretty much lit. It's our first year, so we're kind of optimistic that we're going to do this, so...
What is the time for the lighting?
The lighting, well, it says 6 o'clock, but by the time people come in, we don't want to just like 6 o'clock light the street, see you later. So what we are, we're also doing is we are going to have the luminitos, is what we're calling them, because I'm tired of arguing fajaritos and luminarias, so we're calling them luminitos. The luminitos are going to be lit by the people, whoever wants to light them that night. So it's going to be like a community light. And then after that, we have individuals that are going to be doing it every different night. I still have four days that I need to get covered, or Nisa's going to be lighting luminitos on those nights. But I, the round table also is providing hot chocolate, and I don't, I don't see any, like, it's not going to be too long, so we're trying to get out there, because it's going to start getting cold, so. But other than that, I think we're good.
But then will Santa Claus be there?
Santa Claus is probably going to be there about 5:30. I know I didn't put that on the flyer, but now that we're thinking about it, and if there's a line where the, that's going to be like the first Santa Claus, so there's other Santa Claus events, so we're going to be the first, so. And then the first 300 kids get a little baggy, so.
And photos will be taken? Can I ask a few questions? Photos?
Yes.
Will be taken?
They're going to be taking their own photos, because we were trying, I'll have my camera there, and if somebody doesn't have a camera, I'll have like a piece of paper and I'll write down their name and what they were wearing, if they can't, if they don't have something, I will be there. Or my daughter will be there. Somebody will be there taking pictures if they don't have the access to cell phones, but pretty much everybody has cell phones.
One last thing, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the tree, as well as Medina's services, was all donated?
Yes. Everything was donated, and we did also realize, did not know, that on the east, when you first go into the plaza on that corner, there is a Christmas tree there. It's small, and it's going to grow. So we have a tree there, it's just, it's, we're calling it Charlie Brown right now. It's, we keep calling it, it's the Charlie Brown. But it's, it's as tall as the little gazebo, so it's growing, so it's going to get there. So, you know, when people ask us, you know, why don't we plant a tree? Well, that one's growing slowly. And it's in a good spot, if you really look at it. It's like right when you come into the plaza, so. And so up until then, until it grows more, we also are planning...
Charlie grows.
Kind of funny, but...
Charlie Brown's doing his stuff.
Story, but I was adamant about us planting a tree, right? And so that we wouldn't have to spend so much money, because the community sometimes gets a little upset when they hear the amounts that are spent.
Yeah, but we're not paying for it.
We're not paying.
We're not paying for it, and we are also going to, this next Christmas, we're working on a plan to put a clover, so that you can, so everything will be set already, so we just have to take the clover out, put the tree in. So everything's going to be set, and the next time, we're not going to be like, trying to figure out how to dig a hole, and like everything we did. But the tree looks like it belongs there. I mean, you can't tell it's like, was cut.
So she was quick to say, look, there's our tree.
Yeah, well, I didn't realize, every time I looked at the plaza, I didn't realize the tree was behind me, so then one day I looked, I was like, there's a tree. So that's our tree, it's going to be our future Christmas tree, and so I think it's going to work out.
So please tell the Medina, I'm sorry, Manuel Medina and Teresa, they were out there, and, you know, when you see them, tell them thanks, because their services are not cheap.
No, they're not.
But they wanted to get back to the community, so that's their method.
Yeah, they got, and even Mayor and our Sheriff's Police Department bringing the tree to Ogeens and keeping it there, and then bringing it through town, stopping traffic. We had our Sheriff's Department there helping us, too. So, I mean, it's been a learning, but also a group effort for the county, so.
Tourism, the tourists really love to look at us out there.
Yeah, there was a lot of people taking pictures of us putting in the tree. So it was like, it was a really interesting for me, I'd never been there, so I was kind of having fun, but, oh man, Harmio were having a lot of fun. But, so everything's set, I think. Don't pull me on that, so.
You're doing a good job, Nisa, don't worry about it.
Okay, so hopefully it'll run, so.
Thank you.
But, oh, and your night again is the 12th, to light the luminitos. And let's like, try to get that word out, that they're called luminitos, because so we don't have to keep saying...
And what time is that on the 12th?
5 o'clock. 5 o'clock. So we'll start right away, and we still don't know how many we're putting out, because, again, learning experience, we don't know how many, but me and Renal will be there on Wednesday putting them up, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nisa, for coordinating all those activities on the plaza. Okay. Mr. Harmio, is there more, or is...
No, that's it, I stand for any questions.
Mr. Chair, I have one question. Is there anything that we can do to help for other, the holiday party or the senior center, the seniors' party?
Not off the top of my head, but there might be monetary contribution that may be needed for the employee, or, I guess drinks.
Just tell us what to bring, what to do.
Just let us know.
Thanks.
Okay, if there are no further questions, are we on the historic county courthouse update?
You haven't seen, Chris might have better information than I do, so I'm not sure where Richard's at, I'll text him to come on down, so, Chris, off the top of your head, anything on that?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I think we've reported in the past, we are now fully funded, so we got $5 million in capital outlay. We have about three federal grants that gets us up to $7 million in addition to the money that we've spent in the past, so it's nice being fully funded. The challenge is when you have all these pockets of money, you have to be careful which one you're pulling from, because you have to comply with all the respective grants. We have a new site manager onboard. He has some roots from northern New Mexico, from the Taos area, but he's been in the industry, he seems to be, his heart's in it, and so we're moving forward. A couple of setbacks, the roof has always been an issue, but we've got that contained, and it's, I'm not sure if anybody's been there, but you can see the elevator going all the way up now, that structure is there. So we're about to conclude with our CDBG grant. We're down to the last $30,000 of the 1 million plus. Hopefully we'll get that done, we have to get it done in December, because that's when it turns into a pumpkin on us. We have to get it done in December because that's, that's when it turns into a pumpkin on us. So I want to thank North Central Economic Development. We had some challenges with that grant. They, and I know Commissioner Brett, Brett Schur, you're on that board. If you can let them know that that was a lifesaver, that was very helpful. They do great work for us. We seem to be in a good place. It seems to be moving along, nothing to hold us back. We waited for a while for Kit Carson to help us move a line, but we got past that. So I think, I encourage people to go take a look at the job site.
Okay, great.
Thanks. See, off the top of your head. So Costia, Elven Tree Partnership with Costia.
So, so I wasn't anticipating. We had our senior center up in Amalia, as you know, can't be used. We're gonna have to raise that unfortunately. The grant money that we had was calling out that particular site. Because we changed the name to the Amalia Costia area and that site's no longer officially in the side of the community center, it appears that long-term and aging are gonna allow us to, to say our new site is in Costia. So that's gonna allow us to move the, the $1.4 million that we had earmarked for the previous center to the Costia area. But we'll, we do have a short-term lease in place, but because we have long-term dollars, we will need to put in place a long, a long-term lease. We'll work with council to get that done. We're hopeful that we can still use a piece of those dollars to raise the building up in Amalia. But we're talking about two different sites, but we're talking about one senior center. So there were some changes at long-term and aging. So people now are more supportive and working with us as opposed to telling us why we can't do something. And so I'm hopeful that we can get through this process. But we have a few more discussions with the state. But I think we're getting to the last phase. We probably want to work on that parking lot to make sure it's safe for people to, to get there. But we're gonna have some, some dollars to maybe do other things to make that a pretty special location. And the new location is closer to more population. It's easier on our staff to get to that location. So I think we can have a really good center there and there's room to grow. That building that we're in is in really good shape and it's not being used. So hopefully it can complement other activities from the community. That won't be our responsibility, but it can be utilized for the community as well. Us coming in there and bringing it back to life will help make that happen.
Okay, did you have anything to add, Richard, on the historic courthouse that you just walked in?
Chairman Commissioners, not much. We have the change order, working with the budget for everything that we have been funded. It looks like we are probably gonna be a little bit short only because of the unforeseen damage to the courthouse. If we don't have any more of that, I think we'll be in good place. I'm hoping to bring the change order with the scope of work to the commission. We should have all the numbers back now and we're gonna meet with on Thursday, kind of go over things, make sure we're in this place we want to be and bring the change order to you for the next commission for approval. All the electrical stuff, the spaghetti that was in the north side of the commission, of the, of the property has been all straightened out. We put in, Kit Carson has put in a new pole, relocated some power lines, abandoned some power lines. And we're ready to proceed now with sidewalks and excavations along the backside of the courthouse. Elevator and fire exits have the structural decking on them. They haven't been insulated and roofed yet, but the structural decking's in place. All the structural steel is on-site to start doing the openings from the courthouse on both the first and second floor to connect the elevator lobby and fire exits to the courthouse. So we've done a little bit of patching, trachea moche to try and keep the water out of the roof. And it seems to have helped a little bit. It wasn't quite as bad with the last moisture that we received. It's moving along and the goal is to have it complete. Pressing for 18 months, weather and supplies are cooperating.
So did you say there'll be a contractor meeting on Thursday?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. And so what is the schedule?
9:30 though now, we moved it up to 9:30.
9:30?
Yes.
Okay, so did, what is the schedule for the winter months? Will it be inside?
Well, once we sign this change order, then there's quite a few things that can start happening. We can start the demolition for the public restrooms. That entails taking the floor out of part of the second floor. All there's concrete, taking the fence down and making access to get all the concrete. That's gonna be a big demolition project because the old vaults are, have a 10-inch concrete ceiling, 8-inch concrete walls and a 14-inch concrete floor. And all of that has to come out before we can start our bathroom renovations. But there'll be that, there'll be the, as long as the weather continues, we'll tent and pour some more concrete for the sidewalks and the stairs coming out of the back of the courthouse, possibly depending, weather's been great. We'll continue working to connect the block structure to the courthouse and get the structural steel and roofing on and have it dried in so that there's no damage to our building or Mr. Weimer's building to the west.
Any other questions for Richard on the historic courthouse?
No, thank you.
Okay, general construction, general construction, the biggest, not the biggest,
but one important deal, we finally have an appointment with the state fire marshal's office to get our final inspection at the veteran cemetery, which is the fire alarm and monitoring. All that's under contract and we're just awaiting fire marshals to come up and sign off on it. And that building is 100% complete. We've signed contracts with the architect and the contractor for Phase 1 of the detox center. We'll be doing a Zoom meeting this afternoon and we'll probably do a pre-construction meeting next week sometime on the site. So that's.
Exciting.
All the paperwork is, is in place and now we can start moving forward on that. Hondo, we are gonna lead a little bit, well, we knew we were gonna need some additional funding because of the quote for the Hondo bathrooms. It's a little bit worse than what we, what we thought. We actually took up the floor and there's probably three or four inches, what we thought was just having to replace where the plumbing fixtures were. And now it looks like we're gonna have to replace the entire floor in the bathrooms because it's unsupported. The ground underneath it is settled and the slab was just kind of floating there, which was kind of aggravating some of the pipes. The pipes were in terrible, terrible shape and that's the biggest issue. But it is moving forward also. La Senegal is moving forward fairly well. I probably will bring a couple of change orders on that. Because of the roof again and the lack of maintenance for X amount of years, there was no plans to tear out the kitchen ceiling. We were gonna put in a new commercial drop ceiling like we do in all our commercial spaces. My concern is, but while we're in there now, pieces of, big pieces of plaster are dropping off of the ceiling because of the water damage. My concern is that if a big piece falls out and falls through the ceiling, staff could be injured. So it's something that we may, I'm getting a price to take out the existing hard ceiling because we're putting in a drop ceiling anyways, a standard kitchen commercial ceiling. And so that's something that we'll probably take care of, that's a safety issue. One of the other things too, as since we're phasing it, there's some ductwork that, speaking with the project superintendent, I think we should put it in now before we put in the ceilings that we're gonna put in so that we're not having to take the ceilings out to put the ductwork in later. And so that's something just, it will be a change order because it's an alteration of the scope and in the sequencing. The biggest concern though is removing that hard ceiling that was, that is in the kitchen area right now because you walk in there, like I said, going there after a weekend some days and there's chunks of plaster that probably weigh 100 pounds on the floor. And like I said, there was no plans to take it out, but because there was so much water damage in the past, I think we may have to.
Any other questions, Commissioner Brett?
Thank you, Chair Romero, and thank you, Richard, for the update as always. Just a question about Hondo because I know that it's a long time coming for that construction project to, to get going and it's awesome that it is, but construction is a pain and messy and the building is still being used by the community with no bathrooms. And I'm not gonna ask what our ETA is with like bathrooms being finished.
If I had another check for $80,000, we could just run right through and complete them.
Exactly, but because we don't know when that's going to happen, can we work toward portables or something? Because right now for the folks who do use that, and it's everyone from our Aseca associations to the community association, have no bathrooms. And what can we do to help them out while, and I'm hoping the, the project doesn't go for months and months and months, but we know how construction is. Is there something we can do to help make the building more usable for those groups and people who are using it?
About the only thing we could do and we should be, and we should actually have, contractor has a portage on because it's required by law for employees. It's there for anybody to use, it's there. But we, and I know they're using it for meetings and whatnot, just some light stuff. We should have 1 ADA portage on and one standard portage on there. And that's about the best we can do right now.
Okay.
And that's something that I've talked to Chris and Brent and see where we can find some funding to.
Thank you.
From facilities or something like that.
And thank you, Chris, for the update too, sorry, I didn't see you still there.
Commissioner, here?
Yes, can you speak to the Ag Center? I know we're getting really close to getting that project.
Yeah, Ag Center, so the classrooms are actually complete, complete, the heat is on. Oh, we need to get final inspections there also. I'm asking Facility Build also to give us a quote on the few little details that are left on the kitchen area. Like we need some thermostat, thermostat wires. Unfortunately, that roof has still got some leaks in it and we have a little bit of water damage in one of the bathrooms on the ceiling that we need to get up on the roof and just wasn't put together real well. But, you know, it's something that we have to look and find, that's something on us. Also put, put the base, the base along the hallway, weld the seams on the, on the flooring, just a few minor things. I would think less than $50,000 in its entirety. And then, then we also, you know, talking to Gilberto, we've gone over the list of the buildings that are required to have monitoring for their fire alarms and fire suppression systems. We don't have it in quite a few of them. That's something that has to happen so that we can get a fire marshal inspection there also. So we're there, like I said, we're waiting for the final of what was done by Facility Build. We'll get a quote for what we need to finish, just the last few things in the kitchen. While we do that, I probably, we need to talk about how we're gonna use that kitchen to make sure we have everything that mechanically or electrically that we need to do the kitchen, whatever we're gonna do in the kitchen. As a teaching kitchen, it's fine. As a snack bar kitchen, it's close to being everything that we need. But we do need some equipment, we need refrigerators. Right now we have a couple freezers from Amalia in there. We took the large, for lack of a better word, Presto cooker that was at the detention facility. It's a $20,000 piece of kitchen equipment. It's there, we need to decide where we're gonna put it and take water to it because it's, you can wash it in place and, and cook with it in place. So there's a few things that we need to work out in the programming also so that whatever we're gonna do, let's finish it up and we're, and we're good to go.
Thank you.
Anything on the community centers?
Oh, Pinasco Community Center is under contract. They're applying for permit. We've had the soils testing done. And so we have the contract not inclusive of site work in a septic system. The septic system has to be inspected by EID. They'll tell us what, if there's gonna be any additional requirements. I think there probably will be. The site work contractor was unavailable to get anybody to bid on the site work up there. And so we, to get it under contract, we took it, we're under budget, we have enough for the site work in septic. That's, that will be a change order once they find somebody who's willing to do the work. It's tough to get commercial work in northern New Mexico. People don't have the bonding capacity and it's, it's a lot to bring people up from out of state. Mr. Silva from Silva's Escavation had done a lot of our site work on various projects and, and he's occupied, I don't know that he, I know they approached him about it, but I don't know what his answer was. So, but we are under contract and we're going to permit and that was moving forward also. Hope to break ground this spring.
Okay, and the, you know, community, community, community center, and maybe Chris and manager Hamil could speak a little bit on new developments, on an agreement or how we proceed with that project.
Mr. Chairman, members of the, of the commission, thank you for the, the hard question. That was unexpected. Always a challenge. When I first got here, I found a stack of binders and this challenge has gone back to 2010. In 2012, some really nice documents were put in place. But it looks like within a year later, things kind of went back to the way they were. So we're trying to figure out how to get this done. Every community center is a little bit different. We were able to get an agreement in place with Arroyo Seco, but they're, they're not occupying, it's a lot easier because they're not occupying the building. So it doesn't appear to the state that there's any anti-donation. So we have a volunteer agreement there. I just worked with our council to finalize an agreement with Talpa. I sent them a preliminary with, yeah, Talpa. I sent them an agreement a while back, but I'll be sending one today that have the final changes. I think that's gonna, gonna work for us. And then that'll be our template to go to our other community centers. We did have some conversations with the state during the budget conference and there were some other ideas thrown out that we'll, we'll pursue and see which one works best. The other good news that, that will help this process along is our SBA grant for $850,000. That's gonna give us some dollars to bring some furniture and equipment and, and actually compensate the community centers that want to work with us on this project to meet our objectives with that grant. So we'll be able to provide a stipend to the folks that are really helping us bring these community centers back to life. So some work to be done, but I, I think we're moving in the right direction.
Let me just add, Chair, that because they're all so different. I mean, even the community and constituents out there, they see something happening at one and they're wondering why it's not happening at the other center. And so for example, Talpa Anano, they, they are ran differently. And so, you know, there's some expectations out there. So, you know, because these are mostly volunteers that, that operate these community centers. Chris has done a heck of a job in trying to make sure the community stays in community centers. So thank you for doing that work because the last thing we want to do is offend our, our volunteers. I mean, these are people that put time in every day to, to be there, but they are operated differently, so it has been a little bit of a challenge, I'm sure, Chris. But thank you for the hard work and asking the questions on how do we manage these community centers without losing that community feeling.
Thank you, Commissioner. I, my observation is it really is the, the community members that are bringing these centers back to life. And as appropriate, they're doing it in their own way. Every community is a little bit different, they have different objectives. And I, I think that's the model. When I was at a different county, we looked at what you were doing up here and we, we wanted to figure out how to replicate it. Brett didn't tell us the challenges behind the scenes, but we were looking at, at you all as a model because the other model of where we just staff it, that wasn't really working out. And I think this is the model, we just need to figure out how to, how to make it work and, and put in the hands of the local community members to, to develop their own community center and lend them that support.
And what's really important is that communications, because as Commissioner Hill says, they are so different that we need to have those lines of communication with the different communities as to how they operate their community center. And so thanks for that also to keep, keep those communications going and, and try to resolve issues and move the projects forward. So thank you for that. Okay, is there anything else on, on the general construction? If not, we'll move then to the commission. If not, we'll move then to the commissioner's reports and matters. And we have new business to be considered at future commissioner meetings. Is there anything from any commissioner on that? Not commissioner announcements. I would just like to announce that we did, a couple commissioners did attend the budget conference as well as a lot of staff, and very good information. We get information about all aspects of county government, whether it's Open Meetings Act or the audits or the budget. Lot of good information, some of it review, but we need to continue to be part of that and make sure that our staff is getting all the information remaining current on all the changes that do occur. So we did have that budget conference last part of November, I think, November 20th to 22nd. Any other announcements?
I would just add, it was a great conference, and I think that's sometimes you don't realize, but you actually can solve some of the, you know, you can get those questions answered that sometimes kind of linger in the back of your mind. And hence, I think, as you stated, Chris, DFA, you know, being there and certain folks being there, you can, you know, actually run those scenarios of some of the things that are happening that we're just not really sure how to maneuver, and they're very helpful. It was very helpful. So I know I learned some things that I didn't know. So that was great. And we had fun too, because we did laugh our heads off during lunch, didn't we? Because we had a comedian and didn't realize how many folks, you know, they know how to have fun at a budget conference.
Okay. Any other announcements? If not, we'll move to board committee reports, particularly North Central Economic, New Mexico Economic Development District. Commissioner Brent?
Thank you, Commissioner Romero. And I know North Central New Mexico Economic Development District has already been mentioned a few times in Mr. Madrid's reports about things like our CDBG funding. But the board meeting that I was at happened on the 21st, so the Thursday before Thanksgiving. And just a couple of highlights, there was a member survey that went out to the seven counties that North Central serves, and the priorities that came back will probably not surprise us, but it's just good to know that we as a region are kind of all on the same page. Top priorities for services that North Central provides was the grant writing and technical assistance that we have definitely taken advantage of and benefited from. Transportation project help through the RTPOs and affordable workforce housing. Those were by far the top three strongest priorities of the members in the region. Other services were indeed the CDBG support that Chris mentioned and some disaster recovery and emergency preparedness work, bless you, that North Central has done. I'm not sure if folks realize that in San Miguel and Mora Counties, North Central was instrumental post-fire in setting up folks there on the ground to help with recovery, everything from, you know, helping folks navigate their own situation to actually setting up, helping set up the communication services. They played a big role in that, and that is something that perhaps, you know, we can in terms of preparedness, look to them for in the future to figure out what they learned in those counties post Hermann's Peak Canyon and see what the recommendations are for us to be doing here. Another important role they played. We also went over North Central's legislative requests, which include new renovations and equipment for the new office that the organization purchased earlier this year in downtown Santa Fe within walking distance of the roundhouse, which is important. And also requests for money for vehicles for the Non-Metro Area Agency on Aging and requests for additional services to expand the aging network and the services that North Central is responsible for coordinating for our seniors throughout the state, including food, transportation, and in-home services. I think it's easy for us sometimes to forget that North Central is kind of like the home for those senior services throughout the state. And other than that, we did review the organization's comprehensive economic development strategy. And those things included, these are some of the things that I think were important, which is informing more seniors about the services available so that more people can take advantage of them, and also informing more of our state legislatures about North Central's mission and work, which is important because it was legislative dollars that helped get started the grant writing program that Felicity Fonseca now heads up. And that has, the return on investment of that has been like, what, 10, 20 fold? It's been pretty amazing. So the more our state partners, the more work that's coming out of Central, the more support we can hopefully get. So that'll be it for now. If anyone has any questions, see me later, or if you need a member survey or the Economic Development Strategy doc, I'm happy to share those as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Bush. Any other reports or committee? Not to item 15, 14, 16, no, 15. Executive session, Towns County Board of Commissioners may convene in closed session. And this is a discussion regarding potential purchase of property. This matter may be discussed in executive session under Open Meetings Act exemption 1015-1HR, which allows for discussion of the purchase, acquisition, or disposal of real property or water rights by the public body. Entertained motion to go into executive session. Motion by Commissioner Bush. Second, second by Commissioner Mascherinius. Madam Plitt, please call the roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Verheil?
Yes.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascherinius?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. And we'll be going into the executive session. The time is 10:17.